Okay, welcome to the regular Half Moon Bay City Council meeting of November 1st, 2022. This meeting will be held entirely by teleconference. All council members and staff will participate via the Zoom platform using the process I will now describe. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to recent amendments to the teleconference rules required by the Ralph Brown Act allowing teleconferencing during a proclaimed state of emergency, where local officials have recommended social distancing. This is AB 361. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar and live Spanish interpretation will be available within the Zoom platform. Members of the public are welcome to log into the webinar as attendees. During any public comment portions, attendees may use the raise your hand feature who will be called upon and unmuted when it is your turn to speak. This meeting will also be streamed on Channel 27 on Pacific Coast TV and on Facebook. That's the City of Half Moon Bay Facebook page. If you want to join by phone, you can do so by dialing 669-900-9128 using webinar ID 995-8894-7925. If joining by phone, use star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. Is Nicholas Laskovich available to explain Spanish interpretation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable City Council Members, Mr. Chittister, City Manager and Staff. I would gladly do so. This is Nicholas Laskovich, Spanish interpreter. Buenas noches, les hacemos saber que esta reunión se realizará íntegramente por medio de teleconferencia. Todos los miembros del Consejo y del personal participarán por medio de la plataforma Zoom. Esta reunión se realiza conforme a las recientes enmiendas a la regla de teleconferencia de acuerdo con la ley Ralph Brown que permiten la teleconferencia durante un estado proclamado de emergencia cuando los funcionarios locales han recomendado distancia social que incluye la ley AB 361 que tiene el propósito de proporcionar un ambiente más seguro para el público, los funcionarios electos y el personal al mismo tiempo que permite la operación continua del gobierno y la participación pública durante la pandemia de COVID-19. Esta reunión se llevará a cabo a través de Zoom y la interpretación al español está disponible dentro de la plataforma de Zoom. Los miembros del público son bienvenidos a participar como asistentes y durante las porciones de los comentarios del público, los asistentes pueden utilizar la función de levantar su mano y serán llamados a activar su micrófono cuando se les dé la oportunidad para hablar. También pueden acceder a la reunión por vía telefónica llamando al número 669-900-9128 usando el número de identificación 955-35614-4263. Si se une por medio del teléfono, use la estrella nueve para levantar su mano y estrella seis para activar o desactivar su micrófono. Para poder acceder al canal de interpretación de audio al español, haga clic en el botón de interpretación que se encuentra en el icono del globo o un mundo en la barra de tareas. Aparecerá un menú y usted podrá seleccionar el idioma en español y la reunión será interpretada íntegramente al español. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's done.
Gracias, Nicholas. Also providing interpretation services this evening will be Francisco Dolores. So I'm calling this meeting to order and asking for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Here.
Councilmember Rabeck?
Here.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Here.
Mayor Reddick?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Why couldn't we have a motion to approve the agenda unless there's someone who would like to pull an item for further discussion?
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rabeck?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we're moving on to public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to discuss items that are not on the regular agenda or items that are on the consent agenda. I'm going to read them.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Catherine Slater Carter.
Thank you. I had been selected to come and speak to you folks tonight about the feral cat issues. And I see it's not on the agenda. I have been talking to folks about this and quite a few people are very concerned. I appreciate the fact that you took it off the agenda and hopefully it is so staff can work with the feral cat groups that work to keep the feral cat population significantly reduced with their catch, care and release program that sterilizes them and vaccinates them and keeps them from having babies. I will say I know several people who have feral cats, one who selected to have feral cats that live outside to keep the rodents down and adopted them. My daughter and her husband were adopted by a feral cat and they've had her for 15 years, I think. And I know people over the past decades who in Half Moon Bay have cared for feral cats. I appreciate the fact that you are thinking more about this and I would encourage Half Moon Bay to do a leadership program for all the communities, not only on the coast, but along with others in California for taking care of these not wild animals, but abandoned animals who have been put out against their will, actually. One friend who adopted feral cats, every time she opened the door, they went and hid under the bed. They did not want to go back outside. So and some of you may have known Edie Cook when she lived here. She had several wonderful cats. So it's just a thank you. There are folks who will be in touch with staff and if the council members would like, I'd be happy to put you all in touch with them so they can send you information and once again, put Half Moon Bay in a leadership position. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next speaker is Bill Balsin.
Hi, my name is Bill Balsin. I'm a candidate for city council. On October 18th, I offered an opinion based on documents given to me by the city clerk in response to a public records request that Half Moon Bay has overcharged the sewer fund for overhead. The city manager stated I was wrong citing a 2017 document that had been withheld from me and has since been supplied. I withdraw one of the three reasons I gave that the city is overcharging overhead, but the other two remain valid in my opinion, given the documents the city has provided. It's shameful that the city would play politics by withholding responses to document requests. It's worth noting that the city's appeal of Judge Rudy's opinion appears to claim that the entertied charges are not lawful under Prop 218, yet they were being charged to the sewer fund anyway. On October 18th, in public comments, councilmember Penrose engaged in name-calling. Penrose shares blame with Rabeck for the sorry state of our sad Sam relationship. Both are appointed to the Sam board. Her defensive rhetoric was given in self-interest. It was inappropriate for the chair to permit an abuse of the council deliberative process by injecting unsupported name-calling into the record, particularly when Pez Rose's comments were electioneering intended to benefit the chair's failing campaign. That action tarnished the reputation of the council since only a council member has standing to object. The voters can add this to the long list of reasons to vote Rabeck out of office on November 8. I take care to explain the basis of my opinions and written comments that I make available on my website at BillBalsin22.com. Anyway, anyone is free to examine and quote from my writings and I generally try to respond to requests for comments. I've also added links to the three opportunities for the candidates that have had responded publicly to questions. These included the Chamber of Commerce, the KHMB radio interview and the Great Debate also on KHMB. The public should take time to watch and listen to these since they are more reliable than shrill name-calling. I have also added a brief description of my five-step action plan to get Half Moon Bay on track. Thank you very much. My name again is Bill Balsin.
Thank you, Bill. Next speaker is Wayne Tam.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Member. My name is Wayne Tam from Carpenter Local 217. Today I would like to talk about four things. The first thing is local hiring and healthcare benefit, permanent wages and a penis program. Such as right now is a top day, so lots of people, they want like developer, they want to save money, so they don't pay for our area wages and no healthcare. Healthcare is so important for me and my family also. And local hiring such as like right now is after the pandemic, everybody driving, so we have a lot of vehicles in the road. Local hiring is really improving for the work at the city. So reducing all the greenhouse gases. And a penis program is bring up our next generation for the city and build a better future. Thank you for listening. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Our next speaker is Susan Holland.
Hi, my name is Sue Holland and I'm a pastor here in Half Moon Bay and I'm speaking to you tonight as a member of the Coastside Chapter of Faith in Action. I know that the council and the planning department of Half Moon Bay are actively working on the homeless problem here in the city. Tonight I'd like to add my voice to those of the ALAS Fair Housing Committee to raise awareness of the need for affordable housing for families as well as those living on the street. Given the extraordinary high price of rents in this area, many of our Half Moon Bay neighbors who are essential workers in our community and are living on minimum wage cannot afford adequate housing for themselves or their families. So while many of these hardworking families might not technically be homeless, they are forced to live in makeshift homes such as garages or to share apartments with several other families. And that of course means that whole families are surviving by sharing a single kitchen and a bathroom. Arrangements like these are especially hard on children who don't have enough space or peace to be able to get a good night's sleep or to do their homework. So I'm calling on the council and our city planners to remember the vital role these essential workers play in our community and to consider these families as you plan for low and affordable income housing in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Our next speaker is Rosio Avila.
Buenas noches a todos el consejo y la comunidad.
Nicholas?
Quiero preguntar cuáles son los planes o han tenido alguna respuesta sobre la Stone Pine acerca de las viviendas accesibles para las personas de bajos ingresos.
Un momento, Rosio. Nicholas, are you there? Francisco?
I wonder if Nicholas is still on the Spanish channel, Jessica?
He's on on two devices.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
We apologize. The normal arrangement wasn't possible this evening. Let me turn off interpretation for a minute.
Would you like me to translate for you? I'd be happy to do it.
Sure.
Okay. Rosio, buenas noches, ¿cómo están?
Buenas noches, bien gracias. Mi pregunta es, ¿cuáles son los planes o los avances que han hecho sobre las viviendas en la Stone Pine? ¿Hay planes, hay cosas que están haciendo la ciudad ahora para construir viviendas ahí?
My question is about Stone Pine. If there's anything new, what are the plans? What is the objective of building housing at Stone Pine? If you could give us an update about what's happening right now.
He mirado que están trabajando hacer ahí en Stone Pine sobre un proyecto que dijeron de construir un corralón.
I've noticed that you are doing work to Stone Pine and the work that you're doing is about building a courtyard.
Un corralón para su maquinaria o tal vez para meter cosas de la ciudad.
A courtyard that has been built for the equipment, construction, building equipment or things for the city.
Si ellos piensan en mantener en un lugar a salvo esa maquinaria, yo pienso que ellos tienen que pensar en que nosotros necesitamos hogares donde tener a salvo a nuestros hijos. Construir viviendas en Stone Pine.
If you're thinking about building a courtyard where the equipment is going to be safe, I would also like for you to think about, we need housing for our families could be safe.
Porque es frustrante. De hecho, yo hoy tengo, he pasado una situación con mis hijos que están enfermos y estoy en un solo cuarto y en la noche está llorando y la otra, no puedo dormir. Es frustrante para nosotros tener estas situaciones.
It's frustrating for us to be under conditions where I have to shut a room with my family. One of my kids has been sick. My other kid, my other child complains about not being able to sleep. So it is frustrating to think about a normal living situation.
De hecho, hoy me dice, ¿por qué, por qué, por qué no se puede callar el niño? Le digo, no se puede callar porque si él está enfermo, no lo puedo sacar a la calle. No puedo sacarlo para que él esté, él no llore.
Yesterday, one of my children commented about, you know, how come he's not able to be quiet? You know, then I replied, he's sick and I'm not going to get him out on the street, you know, he's my son.
Entonces es algo frustrante para nosotros no poder darles un espacio, un cuarto donde tal vez podamos compartir un cuarto diferente y decir, okay, pueden ponerse en este espacio mientras nosotros estamos acá con alguien que está enfermo.
It is frustrating for us not to be able to give them their own room and have them be in their own space or we'll take care of my child who's sick.
Por eso espero que los concejales y las personas que nos escuchen que se haga posible esto, que se haga posible las viviendas para las personas que realmente necesitamos.
That's my hope for the council members that are listening, for the people that are listening to build an affordable housing for us, for the people that need the housing.
Gracias y espero que tengamos una respuesta favorable para nuestra petición.
Thank you and I hope we get a favorable answer about our petition for housing.
Pase buenas noches.
Good night.
Gracias, Rosio. Our next speaker is Joanne Rokoski.
Hi, my name is Joanne Rokoski. I'm a member of Coastside Faith in Action as well as the Unitarian Universalist Coastside Community. And tonight I'm speaking to you as an ally and supporter of the ALAS Housing Committee who have come to you to tell you their stories and demand action to increase the affordable housing in our coast side community. They are some of the people who provide central services here on the coast side. They grow our food, they clean our houses, they cashier in our stores, yet they cannot find affordable places to live. The challenges they face and have shared with us are heartbreaking. Landlords who will rent to a family with a dog, but not to a family with children. An entire family renting a single room in a house with a shared bathroom and kitchen and having to make the choices of family between paying the rent or buying the food. To me, this is an unconscionable situation. I see new homes being built at prices starting at two and a half million dollars and yet the very people who live here now and provide so many of the services that make the coast side a great place to live and an attractive tourist destination cannot afford to stay or must crowd together in difficult and sometimes unsafe situations. I am urging you to take steps to increase the availability of affordable housing for those with low to very low incomes and also to strengthen renters' rights. I believe that everyone has a right in this rich country and in this very rich county to safe and affordable housing. And thank you for the opportunity to share my concern and my support for the urgent work to make affordable housing available on the coast side.
Thank you, Joanne. Our next speaker is Linda Goldstein.
Hi, I'm also with Coastside Faith in Action and I'm also with the Coastside Jewish Community. I am here to support ALAS and the Housing Committee and essential workers that need affordable housing and that rents are so high and salaries are mid-range. It's just not livable. And I also would like to know, since construction for housing takes quite a while, what are we going to do in the immediate solutions for those living out of their vehicles or are unhoused, especially with winter at our doorstep? Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speaker is Carolina Carvahal.
Hola, buenas noches.
Hola, Carolina, buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Could I help you to translate similar phrases for us for we could comment all the words you said, por favor?
Okay, thanks. Buenas noches al consiglio.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Es un placer que nos sigan brindando su atención.
It's an honor for us to continue to receive your attention.
Yo sé que ya están un poco cansados con nuestra insistidera en viviendas accesibles, pero es una necesidad que está padeciendo el pueblo.
I know you might be tired of constant nagging about affordable housing here in our community, but it's something we need.
A veces es evidente que quizás ya los estamos aburriendo, pero es una situación muy lamentable que estamos viviendo los latinos.
It is well-known that what it looks like that we're already complaining too much, but it's a necessity that we need for the Latino community.
Hace poco estuve viendo que estaban celebrando la herencia hispana de los latinos.
Not long ago, I observed that you were celebrating recognizing the Latino heritage.
Considero que si realmente nuestra herencia hispana es tan importante para este pueblo como muchos profesan, debería de comenzar a ver cambios.
I do think about and consider that if the Latino heritage is so important to you, there should be more changes.
Sé que somos constante en nuestra lucha con la necesidad de las viviendas y si es así, es porque realmente las necesitamos.
We are very constant on our fight for affordable housing. If we continue to fight, it's because we really need it.
Este es un estado donde se presume que ama mucho a los latinos. Es algo que también debemos de demostrar en este pueblo.
This is the... What we brag about how much we care about the Latinos in this community is something that we need to do.
Si realmente somos importantes, sería fundamental que comiencen a oír nuestra voz.
If we are really important for the community, it is time for you to listen to our voices.
Somos personas que estamos trabajando por este pueblo.
You are people that are working for this community.
Personas que pagamos nuestra renta, nuestros impuestos.
People that we pay our rents, we pay our taxes.
No estamos pidiendo vivir de gratis.
We're not asking to let us live for free.
Simplemente estamos pidiendo una vivienda accesible a nuestra economía.
We are asking accessible housing for us to our economy.
Como ustedes saben, nosotros ganamos el mínimo.
As you may know, we earn the minimum wage.
Con ese mínimo debemos de sobrevivir nosotros y nuestros hijos.
With that minimum wage, we should be able to survive, us and our children.
Hace poco oí el comentario de que la renta en este pueblo es demasiado baja según algunos.
Not too long ago, I heard that people said that rents in Half Moon Bay are fairly low according to some community members.
A mi punto de vista es un chiste. A veces hay personas que pagan que cuatro mil dólares por un apartamento.
To my point of view, it is a joke because I know people that pay four thousand dollars for an apartment.
¿De dónde va a sacar uno para pagar eso?
What are we going to get four thousand dollars to pay for?
Ganando dieciséis cincuenta a la hora.
We're making sixteen fifty an hour.
Incluso hay personas que ganan a catorce o quince.
There's some community members that make fourteen, fifteen thousand an hour.
Yo sé que un profesional lo puede pagar.
I know a professional could probably pay for that.
Pero no son ellos los que en este momento están necesitando una casa, somos nosotros.
But it's not them who right now needs a home, it's us, we need a home.
Los trabajadores esenciales.
The essential workers.
Sé que todos los trabajos son importantes.
I know every job is important.
No debemos de monespreciar nada.
We should not neglect anything.
Pero en este caso nuestra necesidad es evidente.
But in this case, our necessity is very visual.
Y si ustedes necesitan pruebas para ver cómo nosotros vivimos, se las podemos dar y otorgar.
If you need proofs to show you how we live, we'd be happy to do that to show you how we live.
Los podemos invitar a que visiten nuestros hogares y cómo vivimos.
We'd like to invite you to visit our homes and see how we live.
Para que vean que no es una mentira.
So you see who is not lying.
Es una realidad que se está viviendo. Nuestros hijos se los pueden contar.
Our children can tell you about it.
Así que si... Así que si nuestra plegaria se une hacia ustedes, sería que por favor nos puedan conceder la oportunidad de tener una vivienda digna.
If we continue to ask for your support for us, for you to build affordable housing for us.
No gratis, simplemente una vivienda que podamos pagar.
Not for free, but something that we can afford.
Muchas gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you very much for your time.
My guests, Carolina. Next speaker is Alice Linsmeyer.
Thank you and thank you city council and city manager for listening to this regular issue about the situation of affordable housing for the essential workers in our community. I've been listening to the brave families, mothers pleading for their children and children pleading for themselves. I've been pretty amazed. Children who are bilingual, who are translating to be able to help people understand what their situation is. And I know that you've done some movement, talking about new housing and getting a housing position. And it's a hard issue, however, it's even harder for the families. It's what the two mothers that spoke are saying. And, you know, I have to say for four years we've been coming to city council, more than that, listening sessions, etc., pleading for the families to be able to live in a safe and decent way in the city. Four years ago, we met with the current mayor and she said that bring a bunch of Latino families, it's on the Latino families to come and get city council to act. And that was four years ago and it's been happening. So it's not just a frustrating situation for them. It's a frustrating situation that there's not yet been things done. And I know that there are several things that could be done. You know, there's the whole maxim of justice delayed is justice denied. There could be new housing, there could be affordable rents and rental rights implemented more. I know you've done some things, but more limitation of that because people are getting their rents raised still regularly. They're not, they have to fix their own leaky faucets and leaky roofs. You could work with businesses for a community bank for deposits for people who have to come up with ten thousand dollar deposits in order to rent. So I just want to urge you to continue to support the families, largely Latino families, essential workers, because the children are our future. And, you know, there's a vigil once a month that the families hold. I don't know how many of you have come. I know Joaquin is regular there. But you could show your support at the vigil. And just think about, do we want a city without essential workers? Or do we want to be a city who doesn't care for the most vulnerable, which are the children who are having to live in these conditions? I know you all agree with that, so let's keep working on it and doing everything you can so that there can be an immediate response and longer-term solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Our next speaker is Juana Lopez.
Señora Juana, ¿escucha?
Sí, buenas noches, ¿me escuchan?
Sí, buenas noches. Le voy a traducir. Si me puede dar las frases cortas para poderle traducir todo, por favor.
Sí, está bien, gracias. Pues yo más que nada quiero una vez más hablar con todos ellos sobre las viviendas.
I would like the opportunity one more time to talk about housing.
Ya no me había conectado con ustedes, pero fui una de las primeras que estuve abogando por las viviendas.
It's been a while since I connected with you about housing, but I was one of the first ones to join the meetings and talk about housing.
Y yo pienso que más de alguno ahí se recuerda que siempre les he dicho que somos un solo corazón y un solo mundo.
I'm sure more than one of you remember me saying that we are one heart and we are one world.
Pero me da mucha tristeza que hasta el día de hoy seguimos igual.
It brings me a lot of sadness that to this day, we are still the same.
Yo también soy una de las personas que quizá estoy buscando dónde vivir para mi familia, porque ya ha crecido aquí la familia.
I'm also one of the community members that is looking for better housing for my family. Our family is growing and we need a bigger place.
Y pues seguimos en las mismas, no hay viviendas para rentar con lo que nosotros podamos pagar.
We're in the same situation. There's not a lot of housing that we can afford.
Solamente, ya lo decía una compañera, quizá la mejor ya los tenemos enfadados.
Maybe we already have said... Maybe we have been just talking too much about the need of housing and you are tired of listening to us.
Yo sé que quizá van a decir no podemos hacer tantas cosas, pero a la mejor si ustedes hablan con otras personas más importantes.
I know you're gonna say that we're not able to do, you know, too many things, but maybe if you communicate with other people that can help you.
Solamente les quiero decir que escuchen nuestra voz y que nuestra voz no la callen.
All I'm asking you for is to listen to our voices and please don't quiet our voices.
Y pues hablando de otra cosa, también me hubiera querido meter para decirles algo de Jamon Bay.
I also would like to say one more thing about Half Moon Bay.
Me gustaría que ustedes, no sé si tienen la oportunidad de caminar por las calles.
I don't know if you have the opportunity to walk on our streets.
Porque hay muchas calles que no tienen las luces prendidas, está oscuro.
There's a lot of streets in our community that there's not a lot of lighting. It's dark.
Tenemos tan hermoso nuestro pueblo para caminar, pero no hay luz en las noches.
We have a beautiful community to walk around, but there's no light at night.
Los invito a que caminen por las noches, ya que yo camino con mi perrito y veo que está muy oscuro.
I would like for you to walk around our community during the night and you will see how dark it is, as I walk with my dog at night.
Y también para que si caminan por la ciudad o nuestro pueblo, yo le digo ciudad, pero es nuestro pueblo, que también hay mucha basura en las calles en veces, que necesitamos que se limpie.
Also, if you walk the streets of our community, you will see there's a lot of garbage in around our community that needs to get cleaned up.
Y tenemos un pueblo tan hermoso que hay que cuidarlo.
We have a beautiful community, a beautiful town that we need to take care of.
Así que les encargo mucho la luz, las viviendas y que limpiemos nuestra ciudad o nuestro pueblo.
I would like for you to consider about taking care of our community, about the housing and the lighting of our community.
Y gracias por escucharnos, por favor. Recuerden, todos somos un solo corazón, un solo mundo.
And thank you for listening to us and remember, we are all one heart and one world.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias, Juana. Our next speaker is Belinda Ariaga.
Hi, city council, hi, city manager, mayor. I'm really happy to be with you all this evening. And basically, I just wanted to take a different kind of stance on the representation of the community that's asking for housing. We just went through a month of celebrations here in Half Moon Bay, one of those being the pumpkin festival, where I just, you know, congrats to the beautiful, you know, job that everyone did. But I have to say that we were really proud to hear so many comments, so many, many compliments about the beautiful community of ALAS that went through the parade with so much joy, with so much pride, with so much family and community spirit, representing the theme of "We Love Half Moon Bay". And those are the same children that are here asking for housing. Those are the same moms that made the hearts, that made the flowers, along with our team that helped decorate the float, whose children are dancing. This is the joy of the alegría, the beauty of our community is literally the families that are talking to you tonight. The mothers, the fathers, Juana, all of those represented here are also been a big part of really uplifting our community in a big way, in a colorful way, in a joyful way, representing the best of Half Moon Bay, I think, in so many ways. We just finished the Dia de los Muertos and we had people calling us yesterday saying, "Why is the altar down?" That people were coming from out of town to try and see the altar. These same families, the dads worked till like eleven midnight with Sanon, with our team, coming early in the morning again on Saturday, you know, starting at five thirty, six in the morning to make this altar happen. Coming through, you know, all day long for the celebration, dancing, performing. This is our community, our Latino community, our essential worker community, our farmworker community that's coming really with a lot of love and showcasing the best, you know, that they can for Half Moon Bay and especially the kids. Like, I can't tell you how many people keep saying, "What a beautiful event, what a beautiful community, amazing kids, amazing talent." And everybody acts like this is something extraordinary. But honestly, this is the beauty of our essential and hardworking families. Like, I was just on the Comunidad de Valle with Damian Trujillo on NBC and he was talking to me on the interview about how our farmworkers never complain, how they go out in the cold, how they go out in the freezing, you know, weather to be able to do this work and they never complain. And our essential workers don't either, you know, our house cleaners don't either. I meet a lot of kids that don't have the best housing conditions and they're going to work at the Ritz Carlton, ready to go, so happy, you know. So all of this community comes together to be the best of Half Moon Bay. I know there's teachers out there that do the same. I know there's construction workers. I know there's, you know, restaurant owners. I know everybody comes together to make Half Moon Bay a magical place to live. And I just want to highlight those voices that are speaking up today, you know, those that are sharing. And thank you all for giving us a space to talk, also to celebrate, also to bring all the joy that this community has to give. Thank you, city council. Please consider finding ways to make this home permanently for everyone.
Thank you, Belinda. That concludes public forum, ma'am.
Okay, thanks to everyone who showed up tonight and was paying attention and talking about very important issues that affect all of us. So tonight, the next item is proclamations and presentations. And we're actually postponing the Native American Heritage Month proclamation. So tonight we just have a Veterans Day proclamation. That's my understanding. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have a little bit more work to do. This is the first time we've brought forward a Native American Heritage Month proclamation. We have a little more work to do with our local indigenous community to make sure we get it just right. So we'll be bringing it forward at the next meeting. Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay, so Veterans Day is coming up and I'm sure most of you sitting on the virtual dais have parents who were service members in various wars. I know my dad was in the Air Force and also was a reservist his entire life. And I know each of us has a story and we have some folks here tonight with their own stories. So, but first I want to just give you moments to recognize the importance of this Veterans Day that's coming up. So let us first begin by recognizing all those who have served in the US military, our veterans, active-duty service members, National Guards and reservists. Your service and sacrifice have kept our country safe and free, and for that, we thank you. We celebrate Veterans Day on the anniversary of the armistice ending World War I on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. A hundred and four years later, we expand tradition, celebrating the heroes among us who have continued to serve our community even after taking off the military uniform. It is important that we continue to serve with them, appreciate them, and thank them by giving back to our community in any way we can. Let's continue this tradition each year, celebrating and honoring those that have fought for our country and continue to do so. Thank you from the city of Half Moon Bay. We want to invite everyone to a new tradition, a city ceremony celebrating those who have served. This year, we're calling it Veterans' Eve, and it will be on November tenth, 2022, so coming right up. We'll share more about this special event a little later this evening. To commemorate Veterans Day, I'd like to read a few excerpts from our 2022 Veterans' Day proclamation. "Whereas we will never be able to repay the debts we owe to those who have bravely answered the call to serve and have earned the dignity that comes with wearing a uniform and defending freedom and liberty. And whereas on Veterans Day, we honor and remember these heroes for their valor, loyalty, and dedication, and we encourage all Americans to recognize the fortitude and sacrifice of our veterans through public ceremonies and private reports. And whereas for all these reasons, we recognize and celebrate November eleventh, 2022, as Veterans' Day. We recognize all veterans who have served our country, especially those that live or originate here in Half Moon Bay and throughout the coast side. This proclamation will be presented this evening to Louis and Tiffany Garcia, excuse me, I think that's Louis, a Half Moon Bay couple who are both Air Force veterans and members of the Air National Guard. Louis remains on active duty and recently returned from a long deployment. Mr. and Mrs. Garcia met while serving in Alaska following nine eleven, when both were serving their original tours of duty. Louis has more than twenty years of active service, including four deployments overseas. He currently serves as a machinist in the Air National Guard, one hundred and twenty-ninth Rescue Wing, based out of Moffett Field. Tiffany works in tech sales, but also remains a training manager in the one twenty-ninth as well. The Garcias have lived on the coast for twelve years with their three children who attend Seacrest School. We are so grateful to the Garcias for their service to our country and our community. Mr. Garcia, would you like to share a few words on your recent return from deployment?
Is it amusing? Okay, no, it's really nice to be back home after that sweltering heat in the Middle East, you know, back to this nice ocean breeze. And it was really nice to come into seeing all the yellow flags or the yellow ribbons tied on Main Street. It really means a lot. It was really nice. I appreciate it. It's good to be home.
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
And I just want to add that, you know, on Veterans' Eve, we will be celebrating many veterans in our community and their stories. And personally, I just want to say, I think our country needs to treat our veterans better than they do. They need full healthcare for themselves and their families. They need free education. They need access to jobs. You know, they are, you know, basically laying down their lives on our behalf and we don't treat them as well as we should. So you see a veteran, say thank you and write to your legislators and let them know how important it is to you that we treat our veterans with respect and with benefits. You know, my dad benefited from the GI Bill, as many veterans did. And we're just not doing enough of what we need to be doing. So thank you to the Garcias and thank you to all veterans. May you live long and thrive. So I have no mayor's announcements of community activities and community service this evening. And I don't believe we have any reports out of recent close sessions. I think our attorney can...
Correct, ma'am. No recent close sessions and also no reports.
Thank you for that. And so now we have city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we have several updates tonight. Uh, we will start with the update that was listed on the agenda, which is the introduction of new staff. And we'll hear from our administrative services director, Lisa Lopez Rossi, and then from our sustainability senior analyst, Veronica Vostanak. Following their staff introductions, we'll turn the time over to John Doughty to talk about the Veterans Eve event. Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm very pleased tonight to bring, um, to introduce you to my newest staff member, Ernest Azavito. Ernest comes to us as an HR analyst. Um, and as you all know, this has been a position that has not been fully filled for longer than a month in two years. So we're really excited to bring him on board. Ernest actually comes from us from the city of Salinas. He was the, he worked in the city manager's office, but specifically served the mayor in that town. Um, and as I hear it, she was very disappointed to lose him to Happen Bay. He also served time in the city and county of San Francisco as a senior, senior personnel analyst, as well as other various HR-related jobs, including some in labor relations. He has a lot of certifications in HR that are going to come in very handy to us in the coming years. And in terms of his education, he's a San Jose State graduate, so he's, he's a Bay Area native. Um, he comes to us with a bachelor's in social science and a master's degree in public administration. He lives in San Jose currently with his wife and two young children. Um, and we're just really excited to have him on board. He's already become a strong member of our team and, you know, we just, we just keep getting better. So, I'm not sure if Ernest wanted to say anything.
Thank you for that introduction, um, Lisa and, um, and Madam Mayor and Council. Um, thank you again for, um, having me here and thank you, uh, Matthew, for the opportunity.
All right, I will turn it over to Veronica now.
Great. Thanks, Lisa. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, I'm excited to announce we have a Civic Spark Fellow that started, um, in October. Uh, the Civic Spark program is an AmeriCorps program that connects new graduates with government and nonprofit work. And Happen Bay was selected as one of the project partners for this year, and I think this is the first time that we've ever had a Civic Spark Fellow, so, um, it's really exciting. Um, the Civic Spark program specifically focuses on environmental and social equity issues. Um, and we have, uh, Sam Trainer here with us, and I think he's here, um, to say hi, but he's a graduate from Chico State and he has a bachelor's degree in environmental science with a focus on energy and earth resources. And, um, he'll be with us until, um, September of next year. And, um, during his eleven-month term, he's going to be focused on traffic demand management and sustainable transportation. Um, so one of the city council priorities and something that, um, is, uh, very much needed here in the city, as, um, as everybody knows. So, um, Sam is also a local. He grew up here. I think his mom has been a math teacher at high school for about twenty years. Um, so not only do we have our, um, our fellow, but he's also local. So, Sam, I think you're here if you want to say a couple of words.
Yeah, so hello, everyone. Um, it's an honor and I'm very grateful to be working for the community, being able to give back. It's where I grew up and, uh, look forward to achieving as much as I can in my service term. So, uh, thank you guys for having me.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, next up, we'll have John Doughty talk about the upcoming, or actually, I believe Jessica is going to talk about the event.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so as Mayor Reddick mentioned, we will be hosting a Veterans Eve ceremony next Thursday, uh, five thirty to six thirty at Mac Dutra Plaza. Um, and we're holding this ceremony to honor the strength and sacrifices of our veterans, their families, caregivers and survivors, and our current service members such as Louis Garcia. So, we invite all members of our community to join us as we come together to, uh, celebrate and honor this important day. Um, we will have some refreshments and hope to see as many of you there as we can. So, that will be next Thursday evening. The next slide, please. Uh, and then being the last council meeting before our election next Tuesday, um, I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind everyone again of all the ways that you can vote here in Happen Bay. Um, so, next slide, please, Colleen. The, um, vote center opened up on Saturday. Um, I stopped by and there was a lot of activity, so that was good to see. But the vote center will be open all this week from nine to five, and then also on Tuesday, Election Day from seven to eight. Um, there are other vote centers in the county, um, if anyone needs to look that up. The county's website is listed on the screen. This weekend, on Saturday and Sunday from nine to five, will be a mobile vote center at the Happen Bay Airport. And then also the ballot drop boxes, um, continue to be open. We have one in the parking lot of City Hall. There is one inside of New Leaf. And there is also, um, a drop box at the library near the front desk. So, um, please do vote and make sure you get your ballots in by eight PM on Tuesday. Thank you. And next, I will turn it over to Scott Phillips from Community Development.
Thank you, Jessica, and Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Scott Phillips. Nice to see everyone this evening. I'll do a quick, uh, intro or synopsis of the, uh, project I've been working on, which is a state parks project, uh, along the western edge of the Pullman Water Course. And it involves the replacement of two culverts that have failed, uh, with one culvert. Uh, and also the culverts currently have, uh, a portion of the California Coastal Trail as well as a driveway accessing a state park, state beach parking lot. And both of those would be refurbished as part of this proposal. And then, uh, since the site is within, uh, you know, potentially sensitive habitat and a water course, one of the first steps in the process is receiving a coastal development permit. So that's, that's what we've been working on. And once coastal development permit is issued, uh, state parks will, uh, need, uh, several other permits from other government agencies, Army Corps of Engineers, Regional Water Quality Control Board, US Fish and Wildlife, and State Fish and Wildlife. Now, the proposal was presented to the Planning Commission last week. Uh, Planning Commission took a look at it. There are a couple of additional items that are needed, and we're working away on that and, uh, including a little more hydrological analysis on, uh, the, this particular water course, as well as a, uh, coastal trail access plan, uh, that will, uh, involve, you know, the coastal trail, keeping it open during construction as much as possible, and possibly rerouting it for a short period of time during the demolition of the, the current culverts. Now, once the additional information is received, uh, we're going to go back to the Planning Commission for them to take a look at this. We anticipate construction on this for, uh, next summer, probably late summer, uh, avoiding bird breeding season as well as during the dry season. And, uh, you know, get this, get the culvert, uh, fixed back up. This slide in particular shows the existing condition there. You'll notice that state parks has, uh, put up temporary barricades to, uh, basically block off the, uh, the driveway accessing the beach parking lots uh, because of the sort of undermining that's taking place from the, the failed culverts. So all of this will be, uh, fixed up and, uh, replaced and, uh, access to the parking lot restored. And, uh, we're just, um, happy to work with state parks on, uh, getting, getting the permits issued. I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, maybe we want to, uh, leave it to the end, but, um, yeah, that's, that's it for the culvert replacement.
Thank you, Scott. And that's the end of our city managers' report, uh, and updates. If there's any questions, we're happy to take them now.
Any questions for staff? I don't see any hands raised. So I think those were good thorough reports. No, no questions. So does anybody want to pull any items from the consent calendar? And if not, could you make a motion to approve? Okay, then I will make the motion, uh, to approve the consent calendar. Uh, item one A, waive readings of resolutions and ordinances. Uh, one B, approve city's response to the August ninth, twenty twenty-two grand jury report entitled "The Delicate Balance Between Knowledge and Power: Government Transparency and the Public's Right to Know." Item one C, quarterly financial report for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Item one D, treasurer's report for the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item one E, First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with SWCA Inc. For the Happen Bay Corporation Yard Improvements Project, that would be CIP number nine zero two three. Could I have a second?
One second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rebecca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two is ordinances and public hearings, and we have none this evening. Item three is resolutions and staff reports. Item three A is climate action and adaptation plans, building electrification and EVPV reach code update. I'm assuming this is Veronica.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Whoa, does anyone else hear an echo? I just heard an echo. I think it's, yes. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, n- nice to be here with you all again about five minutes, uh, later. Um, let me grab my presentation. And... Why? It never likes to do this for me correctly the first time. Let me try again. Oh, my goodness.
Can I help you, Veronica?
I don't know why I always have such a, let's see here, why do I have, what is?
Uh-huh.
I don't know. There's just something about, about me and Zoom that just doesn't like to work. All right, let's try. It won't let me choose a screen.
Veronica, I think in that mode, it's okay.
Is it?
The slide is large and I think it's fine for us to see the slides on the side.
I don't know why. Okay. What do you see? Do you see?
And now we see the presenter view, but again, I think it's fine unless you have notes that say horrible things about me.
I don't. Okay, sorry about that. I don't know what's happening. I got a new computer.
Just do the dropdown on the three dots there.
Oh, here we go.
I think you can.
Oh, it's, it's on my laptop. Okay. There we go. Is that better?
No, go to your three dots on the circle. And I think you can do it there. No, down below. The, right underneath, the three dots, the circle with the three dots.
This one.
Go down there and I think you can change to high presenter view.
Oh, my goodness. Screen sharing has stopped and the shared window is closed.
I just go back to that. Let's, let's work from that, that view.
How's this? It's good. Okay. Sorry about that. Oh, my goodness. I don't know why, why I could never. It's always a different problem, too. Okay, sorry about that. Again, I'm Veronica Vostanak, uh, the Public Works Program Manager, and I'm here tonight to give you some sustainability updates. Um, we're going to be doing just a, um, informational update for you all tonight on these three items. Uh, the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, the Electrification Ordinance, and the Electric Vehicle and Photovoltaic or EVPV Reach Code. Um, so first, we're going to talk a little bit about the Climate Action Plan and giving you some context of the work that we've done so far. Uh, we started working on the CAP in twenty nineteen where we did outreach with, um, with the older adults, youth, and Latino populations. Um, we did this outreach pilot through twenty nineteen and into twenty twenty. Um, we had a request for proposals for a consultant, but, um, unfortunately COVID, uh, had other plans and, uh, we needed to switch to support through the RI-CAPS program, which is a county program focused on, um, providing climate action planning support to, uh, the cities. Um, so we focused our, we refocused in, in using those resources. Um, in twenty twenty-one, uh, we continued work on the CAP, but, um, due to work on the building electrification ordinance, um, some of that work was, um, pushed back. And, um, we've started, uh, refocusing on the CAP, uh, this year in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we had, because, uh, the process took a little bit longer than we anticipated, uh, we had the opportunity to update, to have a new twenty nineteen greenhouse gas emission inventory. Previously, we had been using the twenty seventeen, um, and we made a couple, uh, exciting updates, uh, for this inventory. So we spent the beginning half of this year working on the new inventory, uh, and the second half on, um, drafting the measures that we expect to see in the Climate Action Plan, Action Adaptation Plan. Um, there are three main elements that I would like to highlight, um, today. The first is, uh, the first A, the Climate Action portion of the CAP. Uh, this is focused on identifying where the greenhouse gas emissions come from in our city, um, and then identifying what potential actions, based on a lot of the outreach that we did prior, um, that the community and the city can work together to reduce those emissions to hit, um, the state mandated goals. This is the portion that we've been focusing on. Um, and a public draft of this portion of the CAP is expected, um, in mid-December. Um, there are two other elements that, uh, will follow. We have climate adaptation. So looking at the impacts of climate change, like sea level rise, increased wildfires, uh, flooding, drought. That will come, uh, later on, once the climate action piece is, um, completed and out for public review. And then we also have an element focused on carbon sequestration. Um, there's a lot of interest from both the council and the community to take a deeper look at this, um, both for our, um, working lands, our farmlands, but also, um, our natural lands and get a better handle on, um, what the opportunities are there, um, in the world of carbon sequestration. Uh, we're working in collaboration with the San Mateo, uh, Resource Conservation District, um, to beef up this section, uh, which is pretty unique for local governments. So we're really excited, um, to work with the RCD on this effort, which again will trail, um, after the Climate Action, um, Plan is available for public comment and outreach. Uh, showing a little preview of our twenty nineteen inventory. Um, we have a community workshop, which I will be talking about on the next slide, um, where we'll go into a little bit more detail, um, on this inventory, where these emissions come from and what are the opportunities to reduce emissions in each of these sectors. I just wanted to, to give a little bit of preview. You can see that transportation is our highest greenhouse gas emission, um, emitter, closely followed by building energy. Um, the vast majority of this, uh, building energy piece is natural gas use. Um, this is because of our, um, power coming from Peninsula Clean Energy. We have about ninety-seven percent participation in Peninsula Clean Energy, um, which provides greenhouse gas-free emissions to both our residents and our businesses. Um, following those two sectors, we have solid waste. Um, wastewater and water are a much smaller percentage of where our emissions are coming from. Uh, we'll go over that, um, in a little bit more detail, um, as well as, uh, potential options for reducing those emissions, um, at a community workshop later this week on Thursday. So, um, earlier in the day, around the same time as Make It Main Street, we'll be doing, um, or we'll be playing our Climate Change Lotteria, which we developed, um, with Alas, um, and a consultant, MIG. Uh, we've done a couple pilot projects, a couple pilot games, uh, and we're excited to launch it with the community at Make It Main Street this Thursday. We'll be tabling outside of the library from three to six P M., and we'll be holding games at three thirty, four thirty, and five thirty. The five thirty game will be bilingual, so we'll be doing it simultaneously in English and Spanish. So we're really excited to launch that and and see how it goes with the broader community. And then at six P M. in the community room, we'll be doing a community workshop where I will go in more detail about our twenty nineteen greenhouse gas emission inventory and the ways that we could reduce those emissions. And I'll have a short presentation, and then we'll launch into a conversation with questions and answers. So if this is something that you're interested in, I encourage you all to attend. But I do want to emphasize that this is not going to be the the last opportunity to do so. Once the, once the climate action draft is out, we'll we'll have a lot more events where we can we can have a conversation about what's included in the cap before before bringing it and adding on. So again, I hope to see all of you Thursday, but if you if you can't make it, there will be other opportunities. Moving on to building electrification, the building electrification ordinance was adopted earlier this year. But we have in the ordinance, a requirement for a update every year. The ordinance was adopted in March, but we were doing this update a little bit early on because there's some really exciting. There's some really exciting updates. So to give you all a reminder of the timeline, last year, we developed and did a lot of outreach and study sessions with the ordinance. And then in February of this year, the ordinance was adopted, and it became effective on March seventeenth of this year. Another reminder, here's what's included in that ordinance. So there is a requirement for all electric new construction starting in twenty twenty-three. There was an allowance for projects to continue with mixed fuel, so with gas or propane, as long as they pre-wired for electric appliances in twenty twenty-two. So that allowance for mixed fuel will end for any building permits issued at the end of this year. And starting January first, any building permits issued will need to be all-electric buildings. We also have a requirement that any currently all-electric residential building cannot add natural gas and that all gas lines, so propane or natural gas lines, be capped or decommissioned by January first, twenty forty-five. This was a pretty unique provision. This is something that not, no other city, to my knowledge, has had included in their ordinances before Half Moon Bay. But because Half Moon Bay adopted this, there have been a lot of other cities in the in the county and elsewhere in the region that are really seriously considering adding similar provisions to their ordinances. There are a couple exemptions, which I have listed here on the slide, and again, we'll be going through this ordinance every year and to give the council and the community an update on what the newest information is, is this is a really cutting-edge area. So giving you an idea of the impact of the ordinance so far, we've had nine projects that have had their building permits issued since March. You can see that most of them are taking advantage of the opportunity to continue to build mixed fuel as long as they pre-wire. We've had three single-family residences, one of which is all-electric, the other two have gas. And then there have been now eight eighty U's, seven of which have been built or will be built mixed fuel, and one is all-electric. And there have been no commercial or mixed-use buildings that have received building permits since ordinance adoption or effectiveness. Giving you a little bit of an update, again, there are, this is a really a really hot topic at the moment, and there's a lot of other municipalities that are considering not only all-electric new construction, but looking at existing building electrification requirements. They're looking at both requirements and programs to encourage electrification or help people make the move. So I have some of the cities listed regionally that have considered or or have adopted ordinances focused on existing buildings as well. But this is not just a regional effort. This is also being done nationally. So I have some other cities here that, again, have either adopted ordinances that require electrification of existing buildings in some way, shape, or form, or if they've developed some programs to help especially low-income communities install electric in place of gas. So it's a really, it's it's something that's being considered, not just on the regional level, but also nationally. And Half Moon Bay is very much one of those, one of those cities that gets mentioned when other when other areas are considering. There's also some new and renewed funding programs that have become available since the last time we talked about building electrification. The first, very local, we have Peninsula Clean Energy. They have launched their on-bill financing program, which is really exciting. They have up to ten thousand dollars available with zero percent interest to any of their customers in good standing. So we're really excited that that program has finally launched and hope that people take advantage if they're replacing their appliances. And Peninsula Clean Energy has also increased the incentives for both heat pump water heaters and and space heating. So again, there's there's more money available than there was previously. Also, in the state program, there's tech incentives, which were available last time, but the the funding ran out fairly quickly. So the state budgeted an additional fifty million through the Public Utilities Commission to be available to to renew those incentives that were available. And if I don't believe that money is currently available, but it should be available soon. And I think the best way, if somebody's interested in taking advantage of those incentives, is to go to the Switches On website. Not only can you find information about the incentives, but you can also find contractors that will come and do the work out here on the coast. And last, on the national level, the Inflation Reduction Act included three hundred and sixty-nine billion dollars for energy, security, and climate change. So this has to do with energy infrastructure, but also has a lot of money set aside for direct rebates or or tax tax rebates specifically focused on electrification and and heat pumps. Some of the money is available currently. Some of the programs are still being developed, but we will make sure that we have information on our website for those who are interested in taking advantage. I'd also like to give a plug for on Rewiring America. On their website, they have a calculator where you can put in your zip code, whether you're an owner or renter, and what your income level is, and you can get a good idea of what sort of incentive programs you may be eligible for. This this bill has way more funding available for incentives than we have seen previously. And we're expecting that California will be able to take advantage of a lot of these programs because we've set ourselves up to 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 be ready once this this comes available. So really exciting. There's a lot more money out there to help people make the switch from gas in their homes to electric. And last but not least, I wanted to give a little bit of an update on our EVPV Reach Code. This was focused on electric vehicle charging and solar panels and and backup batteries, similar to the Building Electrification Ordinance. It was developed and adopted last year in twenty twenty-one. Because this Reach Code is an amendment to the Building Code and regulates energy efficiency, this ordinance needed to receive California Energy Commission or CEC approval before becoming effective. We received that approval on July thirteenth of this year, and that's so. So on July thirteenth, our ordinance became effective. This ordinance was was focused on the twenty nineteen Building Code, and there is the twenty twenty-two Building Code, which will go into effect January of twenty twenty-three. So again, to give you a reminder of what was included in the EVPV Reach Code, any new residential building was required to pre-wire for a battery backup system to connect to their solar, which was required under the Building Code, and then increase the amount of EV charging capacity for the residential buildings. We included the Peninsula Clean Energy recommendations for this EV charging to be consistent with other cities in the county and in the region. And for any new non-residential buildings, those buildings must install a solar system in their solar zone. So any building classified under the Building Code as non-residential needed to cover fifteen percent of their roof area with a solar system, and any hotels or motels would need to include five percent of their roof area would need to have solar panels. We did not have any new non-residential or hotel motel buildings that had building permits since July. But there were three new residential buildings that needed to install the additional EV charging capacity and pre-wire for a battery. And as I alluded to on a previous slide, the twenty twenty-two Building Code is coming up. We're expecting that the first reading will be in December. And in that Building Code update, we will have new Peninsula Clean Energy recommendations since the current building, since the twenty twenty-two Building Code is more stringent, is more stringent than what we had in our twenty nineteen EVPV Reach Code. And solar and battery storage, the the twenty twenty-two code again is more stringent than our EVPV Reach Code, and and we feel that that is sufficient and won't be recommending any any changes. So you'll hear a little bit more about those specifics of those recommendations at that reading in December. But if you have any initial questions, I could I can try to answer them. So that's all of my updates for you all tonight, and I just wanted to remind you all that this that this presentation was informational. We're not asking for any particular action to be taken from the the council tonight. And again, if anybody would like to talk more about any of these issues, we will be having this community workshop on Thursday, where we'll go into a little bit more detail and have an opportunity to have a little bit more of a discussion. So yep, that is, that is my presentation, and I'm happy. I know that was a lot of information. So if you would like me to go back to any of the slides or repeat anything, I am happy to do so.
It looks like the vice mayor has a question or comment.
Thank you, Veronica. That was an excellent presentation. I'm very excited about the upcoming work that we're going to be able to do and the changes that we can make in our Reach Codes and Adaptation Plan. The question I have, or the comment I have, is that we're allowing one hour for a community workshop. During that one hour, there'll be a presentation that will last probably ten minutes. That gives you maybe fifty minutes for the public to ask questions and get them answered. I'm hoping that this is the first of several community workshops and that the subsequent workshops will be lengthier than one hour. So that's my comment.
Yeah, we definitely plan to have more community workshops once the draft Climate Action Plan is out. I would also like to mention that, you know, I will be outside of the library from three to six, and we will be playing a lotteria game, and a part of that game is is to do a little bit of education, but also get some feedback on some of these issues. So while the community workshop is only slated for for an hour, there will be a good chunk of that day that that will be available to have similar conversations. But again, this this is not anywhere near the only opportunity. We will. We will definitely have more more likely in in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I'd like to draw draw everybody's attention to an article that's in the New Republic Magazine online called "Our Gas Stoves the New Cigarettes." And, you know, it's about, you know, all the toxins emitted by natural gas, not just, you know, when you light your stove, but just emitting from pipes and conveyances. And some legal experts are looking at natural gas industry and what they know about it and how they're they're sort of continuing to push natural gas appliances and stuff like that. So it's worth reading if you're familiar with, you know, the tactics of the tobacco industry that was subject of a documentary there a couple of years ago. This article talks about similar tactics that are being assigned to the natural gas. It's a pretty interesting article. Our gas stoves the new cigarettes. Kind of provocative, isn't it, really? Harvey?
I really think that we should not talk about natural gas, which really sounds like a wonderful thing, and talk about methane instead, because that's what it is. And as we probably know by now, methane is probably a hundred times more effective, if that's the right word, as a greenhouse gas than CO2. So we should get into the habit of talking about methane appliances, methane stoves, methane heating, just to get people in understanding what's coming on. And also, the, as the mayor just pointed out, the hazards from combustion in in your kitchen and the leaks that have occurred between where the methane is produced and where we consume it. That's a real serious problem. So all of that indicates that we have to get rid of methane as soon as feasible, and it's becoming more and more feasible. Thank you.
Thanks, Harvey. But the focus of this article wasn't so much methane as it was benzene. So benzene is a component of natural gas, and it is carcinogen. It's a known carcinogen. And so the focus was like, you know, we're still pushing product in benzene. And, you know, it's a significant component of air contaminants, you know, in Southern California, especially around our ports. And there's, you know, very high rates of various lymphomas there that are associated with, you know, benzene. So it's methane bad for sure. But benzene is something that the industry knows about and still, you know, you know, pushes, you know, in products. So, yeah, worth reading for sure. Thank you, Harvey. Anybody else? Okay, I think we'll move on. Veronica, thank you for a very thorough report, and I'm guessing some of us will make it to the Thursday event.
Mayor Reddick, we do have public comment.
Oh, yes, right. Go for it.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Dashell Leeds.
Hello, my name is Dashell Leeds. I'm the conservation organizer for the Sierra Club Lumber Preita Chapter. We strongly support all efforts to transition away from gas infrastructure as soon as possible. I don't want to spend too much time on it. I think we've already laid out a lot of why gas is not sustainable in our future. These consistently leaking pipelines, which are a threat to our health, to our climate, and to our economy, frankly stranded assets, and we need to transition away from them as soon as possible. Being a climate leader is not only going to have the widespread ripple effect of inspiring other cities, but it's also going to have local health benefits as well as economic benefits. So we strongly support the creation of the Climate Adaptation and Climate Action Plan. We think that as far as actions go within that plan, we hope that Half Moon Bay seeks to improve ecology and to restore and expand habitat and to implement nature-based solutions. We also strongly support Half Moon Bay continuing to explore the decarbonization of existing buildings with equity protections and a focus on community education. Thank you so much for your work on this so far, and we look forward to reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the future.
Thank you, Dashell. Our next speaker is Bill Balsin.
Hi, my name's Bill Balsin. I have a question for Veronica. A couple of months ago, I recall that the California Air Resources Board announced a new rulemaking that would essentially set, I believe it was 2026, as a deadline for all appliances to be converted to electric from natural gas. That would have a significant advantage in terms of economies of scale, cost of production and the like. And I'm wondering if you have given a thought to aligning Half Moon Bay's regulatory structure with the statewide effort that is essentially targeted to the same goal.
Is that the end of your comments, Bill?
That's my question, yes.
I will say I'm not completely familiar with the the rulemaking that you're referring to. So I will, I will work to to get a little bit more information and at a future update, I can, I can give some more information.
Thanks, Veronica. And there are no other hands raised here. Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, alignment with rulemaking is 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 a good idea. I'm not sure that it's completely applicable here, but I think we need to, you know, take a look. Certainly, the governor has come down, doubled down on the 2045 decommissioning of of natural gas. So let's, let's make sure we're in sync with the state because if we're in sync with the state, think with potential grant funding services, too. Okay, unless anybody has any other questions, we'll move on to item 3B, which is our study session on Poplar Beach and off-leash pilot project.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I believe Councilmember Jimenez is going to start the conversation as he was council member who advocated for beginning this conversation. So with that, I'll defer to him and then I will pick up with a bit of a presentation and 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 then allow the community and the council to speak to the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, John. As you are, you might remember few months back, my horse and I were victims. So a dog attack on the trophy on the beach rail. And after that, it's been a concern of mine, you know, to bring this item back to council, to talk about a pilot program about off-leash dogs at the beach. Since then, I observed several incidents where dogs have been off-leash. I have been verbally abused by a beach goer, actually by a couple, when I, when I asked them to keep the dog on a leash. I again was attacked by another dog on the beach. There was no major incident. My, my lead rope ready to defend my, my horse and myself. I also observed a, a little dog, Chihuahua, go after the horse. The horse kicked and it missed the the Chihuahua, luckily. Would have been a tragedy for the, for the dog and for the owner. So going, you know, about this, this pilot that we, I believe it was Matthew who brought it to us to keeping dogs of certain area, you know, to protect the, the horse riders, to protect the dogs, protect the owners. So it's, I mean, it's not an easy thing. I'm a dog person and I'm a horse rider. So they, sometimes they just do not combine, especially when it's a big dog. And we have our children, you know, riding horses at the beach. So bringing this back, it will give us the opportunity to explore, you know, the options that we have about bringing, be able to bring dogs to the beach and be able to to safely ride our horses at the beach and on the trails as well. So with that, you know, I'm looking forward to to some options in implementing this new pilot program for community members to be safe while they ride.
Thank you. So thank you, Mayor and council members. And so this is a study session. It is intended to be fact-finding and information gathering. But we are hopeful that in the context of this, if there is a desire to move forward with anything, that we maybe get some guidance on that and we'll go through that at the very end. Sorry. So again, the request tonight is to conduct a study session and to consider whether operational changes at Poplar Beach are desired by the council, by the community. Notably, there has been over the last several years, conversations regarding issues of creating an off-leash area for dogs. And out of that, I think also a conversation about whether some restrictions and limitations on where on-leash dogs might go. And part of this is driven by, I think, the user experience. I think the second part of this is what Councilmember Jimenez and other members of the community are going to speak to tonight are just concerns and issues about interactions and conflict among various users, including human beings, horses, dogs, and sometimes what I think folks at least are categorizing as as owners of dogs particularly who are are not abiding by the laws of the of the of the city, which is to keep them leashed and controlled and managed. So that's what conversation is focused on. So again, as indicated, Councilmember Jimenez requested and the council conferred with having this item come to an agenda, and this is tonight. And again, part of this being about the interactions and interface between the human dogs and horses. And I think it's also again, an effort to look at and see whether with some modifications and changes to kind of the operational conditions there at the beach that we might be able to accommodate and benefit all parties in this to a better and greater extent than a safer extent. And that is, I think, the objective, at least of the conversation tonight. It is not about trying to be punitive or problem for for anyone or to blame and cast aspersions to anyone. It's really to find solutions and problem solving tonight. So Poplar Beach obviously is an extremely popular beach, and it is one of the few in the state which actually have these interface challenges and issues being horses, dogs and people. And I don't think I have to point out very to most of you that just to the north in the state beach, there are restrictions on both the dogs and and the horses. And a reminder that Poplar Beach is a place where a horse enthusiast come, both the public as well as private party with with Seahorse Ranch. So we have both aspects of that and we have licensed that commercial activity. So when we talk about the horses and equestrian and those activities, it cannot and should not be focused solely on one user group. It really has to be about the, the, the public who who may come with the horses. I know a lot of folks come in the summertime when they're trying to get out of the oppressive heat from, from the hotter places and allow their horses a little break from that and just come and enjoy. But also, we have a very viable visitor-serving commercial use that has operated for many years and trying to protect those users and those visitors that come and operate. And, you know, it goes without saying, Poplar Beach is beloved asset. And I think people and and visitors are coming and they're all coming for the right reasons. And many of our residents and many of our visitors come and and they have their their dogs leashed. They are fully under control. And again, many of those trips with the horses, whether again, as a commercial enterprise or visitors are are okay, but there are instances and things that occur. And for, for just full disclosure, the the picture to the right is my dog Bentley. And this I happen to be roaming through and wanted to be kind of understand that I have done it as well at Poplar Beach. I had that my beast off of off the leash. This is 2017. It was a while back before the steps went in, but but he did roam there and I'm guilty. And so again, this is not about guilt. This is not about assigning that. It's about how can we move forward? But for full disclosure, I'm guilty too. So as a bit of a background, and this isn't your report, and I don't need to go into great detail here, but under municipal code, basically anywhere in the city that's a public space right of way, parks, beaches, anywhere, dogs in particular have to be under leash and under a six-foot or or less leash. This also talks about being saddled, harnessed, halted. So it also includes restrictions and requirements that that also horses be maintained, managed and controlled, which I don't think is an issue out there for those. But it, this applies equally to, to all the various users that we're talking about. And if in 2020, when the council considered adopting changes to the beach ordinance in particular, you did provide an out in this or a provision which would allow you and the community to to consider creating an off-leash area outside of what's already been designated, which is basically the Smithfield Dog Park. And and for, you know, foreseeably, this would be by resolution and by act to 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 create that. There remain some questions and we've identified that in the report about whether this would require a coastal development permit. We're still kind of going to be looking at that, depending on what direction is to, to staff with regard to this. But that's something we're, you know, we don't know. It could go either way, I think, is is the answer on this one in terms of how far of a permitting process we have to go. And I think that it's important, and this was provided by one of our residents. And this shows a series of responses, and this is on the bluff top. I know it's not on the beach, but this is this is one of the guides for Seahorse Ranch, who is a very good horse person. They know what they're doing and you can just see in this dog is not one that I think most people would look at and say, gosh, this is a vicious dog and vicious animal. But yet you can see where it is just on the left side, just not really showing an aggressiveness. And it transitions in a matter of seconds into an active situation in which that individual really has to fight to keep the horse down, under control, keep himself on that horse and also try not to injure the dog as well in the mix. So I think this is worth sharing and and you could see that. And I think this is important if particularly when you, when you look at some of the folks who who travel and go on the beach and go in these areas on horseback are not folks who spend a lot of time on horses. And we want them to have the greatest experience possible when they come to Half Moon Bay. And so there are concerns and issues. And finally, on that issue is that off-leash activity is occurring. I don't think I'm telling you anything you don't know. And again, but people are also on leash. And so there's a mix there and and I know that 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 we've heard about on-leash and off-leash dogs also having conflict and issues at times. I know that there are, and we've heard that there are either on or off-leash dogs and human beings and human activity having conflict. So it's not just about the dogs and horses. It's about dogs, horses, human beings. You know, perhaps sometimes poor behaving owners of of dogs creating some problems. And frankly, I'm sure there are some probably equestrian enthusiasts who may not be maybe behaving the best as well. Let's, let's be honest, they're human beings. And that's possible. So to toss out sort of into, into the community and into the council's realm is a couple of conceptual ideas that that we have worked through and contemplated. And if you recall in May, when we came for the beach rules and the beach action plan and some things this year, this item was was up there for a just a very, very casual conversation. And part of the issue there, I don't think we could all get our, our heads around the possibilities because we hadn't really plotted it out and said, this is what we think could be done as at least a possibility. And that, at that point, the idea sort of went and simmered a bit, I think, until more recently when this item came up. So option one is is the idea that to the south of the vertical access point near the Poplar parking lot there and the extension of Poplar Street, roughly 600 feet down, you would create an off-leash dog area. And these numbers are just, again, initial proposals, initial thoughts on there. It could be less, could be more. But the idea would be to, in essence, create an area that could clearly separate and segregate off-leash from from other activities. And in this program, on-leash dogs would be allowed both in the yellow as well as the green and extending. So basically, what you would look at is dogs and dog enthusiasts and visitors with dogs would be allowed anywhere south of Poplar Extension out from the, from the vertical access down all the way to basically the extension of Wave Crest, Smithfield. Let's, let's call it there. And then under this scenario would be the concept of not allowing the off-leash or on-leash dogs anywhere to the north. And this would then basically lead into an extension into state parks where there are already those challenges and issues. And I will, as I noted in the staff report, there are now three seasonal volleyball courts that are up there. So there are some issues. One that limit, I think, what we can do in terms of of looking at potentially dog uses to the north. Also, I think there are considerations for even the on-leash with some of those activities and the club volleyball activities and some of the more active engagement that's going on. This concept would also allow conceptually, the equestrian activity to come down through the slot and basically use this area to to kind of circle through and we could work on those scenarios and work at it and stay entirely out of anywhere with dogs. But those who and horse enthusiasts who wish to would still be able to move forward and go south from here. But knowing that there are, the off-leash area is is present and they can sort of plan accordingly and work through that issue. And we can sign and make sure everybody's aware of that. And then conceptual option two keeps the southerly piece of that intact, but would keep on-leash dogs all the way up to the state parks or state beach line with that. And again, that would still then raise some concerns and issues among, I'm guessing, among some of the horse and equestrian folks having that issue. And again, this is not, and then, you know, this is just two options. I'm sure there are plenty more options that that certainly can come, but these are conceptually what we have identified as as at least a starting point for conversation. But these are conceptually what we have identified as as at least a starting point for conversation. And finally, tonight, what we are looking for is some consensus on where we go, whether we go forward or whether this is put on the, you know, on the back burner and to come back at another time. And clearly, if the council is is inclined to go there, if there's a consensus to that point, then it would be advantageous, I think, for the community and for staff to have some sense of of where you stand in terms of some of those issues, particularly should we be looking at this as an off-leash? Should we be looking at limiting the on-leash? And, you know, how do we work through those inner relationships also with the equestrian enthusiasts? So that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
And John, if I if I may, there's just a few things I wanted to add. I've been looking at and dealing with this issue for for many years, and I really appreciate John picking this up and really thinking through all the options and and the scenarios and presenting them tonight. There's two two areas that I want to talk about with this. The first is is part of the reason where we're at, where we why we are where we we're at has to do with our ability to enforce leash laws on the beach. The the requirement to leash dogs is a city ordinance, and the city does have discretion on when and how it enforces its ordinances. Obviously, we want to be able to enforce all of our ordinances. But Poplar Beach especially is particularly difficult to enforce on this issue just because of its its topography and and its access. You basically have three ways, four ways you can access Poplar Beach. The first way is to come up the beach from the south. So maybe you access it at Redondo Beach Road or down at the Ritz Carlton, and you have to work up, you know, like a mile up the beach. Of course, the main vertical access at the end of Poplar, which we've done a lot of great work on, and it's very accessible now. But it's still a hike down the hill down to the beach. And then we have this massive stretch of beach running north until you get to the slot, which is where the horses access the beach, and that's the the easiest point of access. It's the shallowest point of access, but can only be accessed by coming down the trail from the north to the south. And then, of course, you can come down the beach from the north, either from Kelly State Beach or other locations. The point is to get to the center of Poplar Beach from any portion of those access points takes time. And even with a vehicle like Polaris or, you know, somebody that's in good shape on foot, it takes time. And when you think of the law enforcement needs that we have in our community, taking one of our deputies off of their normal beat, off of responding to emergencies, to go down to the beach, you're basically asking a deputy to be inaccessible to the rest of the community for an hour, probably. But by the time they park their vehicle and they get down to the sand and get to any point. And so we've just found it extremely challenging to enforce the leash laws on the beach. By the time law enforcement gets there, people will put their dogs back on a leash, and there's not very little that can be done. We have tried in the past to fund special patrols on busy weekends, bring in additional sheriff staff on overtime to bring the Polaris down the beach. Obviously, there's a cost to that, but also current staffing issues at the sheriff's office make it really, really difficult to find the officers to even staff that kind of a post. And so it is challenging, and and that's part of the reason why I think people choose not to obey the leash law on Poplar Beach. And and so what we're trying to do today is look at other options to make that enforcement easier. And I believe that having this delineation between the north and the south of that main access point makes it easier to provide accurate signage, signage that's easy to understand, and and really clarifies and delineates where you can participate in what activities. And then enforcement becomes a little bit easier because you can see from the bluff top who's in violation and who's not. I also believe that by doing this and bringing ourselves in alignment with state parks rules to the north, there may be an opportunity to work with state parks to have their rangers come and and patrol portions of Poplar Beach because they're already out on the sand and and they're not pulling away from our law enforcement needs. I I can't guarantee that's a possibility, but I think it puts us in a better position to talk with the state parks. And so again, the the ideas that have been presented tonight are our ideas that we've had on how we could kind of meet everybody's needs, protect the horses, provide a part of the beach where individuals and families that do not want to act interact with dogs can have that opportunity while still recognizing that we have a large community that enjoys their dogs, loves their dogs. I'm part of that and wants a place for their dogs to run off-leash. And we want to provide that to the south end of Poplar Beach, and this would be a pilot. Certainly, based on your direction tonight, it requires a lot of public outreach and meeting with the community. This is the first discussion, real public discussion. There's a lot more discussions that we need to take place before we could implement this pilot. But we we hope you'll consider it and think about it, and we can have a good discussion tonight and receive some good direction on how you want us to move forward. Thank you.
Counsel, would you like to proceed to hear a public comment before bringing it back for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Jessica, we'll we'll take public comment now.
Thanks. First speaker is Anahi Vasquez. Anahi, could you unmute yourself?
Anahi, escuchas?
Okay, I'll try her again. Bill Bolson?
Hi, my name is Bill Bolson. I'm in favor of developing an off-leash dog program that is compatible with horse usage. I will have to observe that I have walked my precinct pretty extensively, and there's an awful lot of dog owners, a huge number of dog owners. We could probably get that data from the county. Not too many horse owners. I don't recall seeing a single horse. I realize there is a commercial program there. I'm assuming their lease is a non-exclusive lease, however, and that they don't have a a right to to an exclusive use of even a portion of the beach. Nonetheless, it's not a good thing for the horse to get spooked, but that's partly a problem for them to control. Dogs, particularly larger dogs, need a large area to get exercise. And beaches are one of the traditional places, whether it's a lake or an ocean beach, for people to take their dogs to get to get a lot of exercise. And so it's really inappropriate, in my view, to block access. And then, secondly, I think the objective here shouldn't be enforcement. It should be getting the most compatible uses that we can across the entire population for a beach resource that everybody loves and uses. Everything from toddlers to old people and so forth. So certainly enforcement is a factor. But if if that was the primary factor, then we wouldn't have natural gas cut off and things like that, which are also going to be very difficult to enforce and in fact, aren't really enforced now. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Bill. Anahi?
Buenas noches.
Hola, buenas noches, Anahi. ¿Cómo estás?
Bien, bien. Aquí este, en la junta.
Sí, as a favor.
A mí me gustaría.
Sí.
Ah, me gustaría pues este recalcar que nos apoyen en el proyecto de las viviendas.
Sí, Anahi. Si me disculpas, el tema que estamos tocando ahorita es sobre los los perros y los caballos y las personas en la playa. El tema de las viviendas fue durante la el comentario público.
Oh, lo siento, Joaquín. Yo creo que se presionó solo el el botón de levantar la mano.
Muy bien.
Amé.
So she wanted, yeah, Anahi is commenting about the about the housing. And I mentioned to her that that was in public forum, and now we are addressing about dogs, horses and humans at the beach, of leash dogs. So she just wanted to comment about the housing.
No, we're not taking comments about housing right now.
Sí, ahorita no vamos a tomar ningún, no vamos a tocar ningún tema sobre las viviendas. Hasta la próxima junta.
Okay, está bien, está bien.
Gracias.
Disculpe.
No problema. She apologizes.
Okay, we have no other hands raised, mayor.
Okay, thank you.
We have, no. We have a hand. Yes, okay, there it is. Went away again.
I think the the hand that was raised and dropped was Willa Chapman from Seahorse Ranch. I think maybe it's just a difficulty. I would recommend bringing her over and see if if she has comments tonight.
Willa? Willa, are you there?
Yes.
Hi, go ahead.
Hello.
Did you want to make a comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for having this discussion. I I think it's important to begin discourse on what is actually a very complicated problem. Matthew and I have spoken of this for years in negotiating our contract with the city. An area of concern historically has been dogs off leashes and their relationship with horses. And no matter how sweet and domesticated a dog is, at the end of the day, a dog is a predator. No matter how large and imposing a horse is, at the end of the day, they are not predators. They're prey animals, and their instinctive protective device is to run away from harm. So it's a it's a brewing problem. And what I'd like to share with the council is that I've been at this for 30 years, and I have some historical perspective about what the changes have been on the beach. Post-COVID, the number of off-leash dogs on the beach is exponentially greater than it's ever been. It's a noticeable increase, as is the hostility and abuse that unfortunately all too often comes from the public when one of my staff, and they know to do this nicely, even though they're in a very stressful situation, when we ask people to please put their dogs back on their leashes, that it's causing problems and potential harm. The verbal abuse is something we experience on a regular basis. It's very difficult, and it's very dangerous. I myself, as a horseback rider, have had harrowing experiences. I had a Weimaraner run up from behind and grab my horse's back leg. The dog came out of nowhere, and there was no owner in sight. There was no no one to get hold of the dog. Every one of my boarders at the ranch, and we're talking 30 people, have had story after story after story of scary, frightening issues. We've had people bitten. We've had dogs bitten. There needs to be a solution. We've never asked for, nor do we expect exclusive use of the beach. That's not the purpose. The purpose is to make it safe for everyone. I'm a big believer in multi-use, but multi with multi-use comes compromise on everyone's part. You don't get all of it. You get what you can do safely, and it involves being considerate and thoughtful. And that seems to be not the direction we're going in in general, and certainly not what we've seen on the beach. I'm very much in favor of exploring the option of some sort of partition which keeps dogs and horses separate, purely and simply for safety reasons. I'm a dog owner. I'd love to have my dog and my horse together on the beach, but it's not safe and certainly not off-leash. So I very much encourage discourse and exploration into options which will safely allow all of us to enjoy public land.
Thank you, Willa. No more hands raised, mayor.
Thank you, Willa. So let's bring it back to the two options. Is it possible to see them side by side?
Give us a moment to work on that. Maybe you can start your discussion, and we'll do that. John, I'll work on that.
So let's start with counsel. Who would like to begin? How about Joaquín?
Thank you. Same thing. You know, just following up what we heard from from Willa. I've seen, like I mentioned earlier, I should have shown a picture of, you know, after my after my horse was attacked. And the dog was actually, the dog was on a leash, but the owner cannot hold the dog on the leash. And and I mean, he was, I mean, he was a pretty, a full-sized dog who went after the horses. And, you know, I ended up being the one that was attacked, and my horse was attacked. And he was making sure that, you know, this doesn't happen again, you know, in implementing a pilot program, educational program for beachgoers, and how that can actually benefit, you know, in in a safe way. When we go to the beach, you know, when we go riding, when we take our dogs. Like I mentioned, I also have dogs. And when I have my horses in the arena, my horse, my dog tells me, you know, exercise my horses. But when my horse are saddle, you know, the horse, the dogs know how to behave, and they don't go after the horses anymore. So it is not an easy task. We understand, you know, I understand that dogs need a area to run, you know, off-leash. We have a be a dog park. I go into the beach with your dog, you know, to be safe, you know, keeping it on the leash. If he's well-trained, keep it off-leash. I've also observed, you know, at the beach, you know, people jogging, dogs being off-leash, and dogs, you know, going after people, you know, in a friendly way. But if you're not familiar with dogs and you don't know he's a friendly dog, you know, the first thing you're gonna react is, I'm being attacked by a dog. Same thing, you know, dog fights at the beach. Many different dogs go to the beach. The one time I was verbally abused by two beachgoers, I identify myself, you know, before I said anything, and I said, you know, you need to keep your dog on a leash. You know, they did not care, you know, and they proceeded to actually insult me. You know, and now all I was doing was, you know, you need to keep your dog on a leash. Your dog came after us, you know, to on the horses. And now, you know, I know there's people that ride horses that are gonna be using, you know, mace, you know, for dogs that be attacked the horses. So I don't think, you know, anybody would like to get the have the dog maced, you know. So we need to do an education program about what do we need to do for all of us to be safe, horses, people. Horses, people, ah, dogs. I mean, this is a, we need to do something. And, ah, I'm, I'm, I'm open for options, you know, what can we do?
Thank you, Joaquin. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, ah, I, I think, um, the idea is very sound. I think it makes total sense to have spaces for dogs to run off-leash. It makes total sense for horses to have places where there are no dogs off-leash. And I think it also makes sense to have places for humans to be without either. But that doesn't seem to be part of the deal. I'm not sure about the extent, if we're looking at the zone from Kelly to Poplar and saying that that would be no dogs at all permitted. That seems like a large area. Um, I'm wondering where the volleyball courts are situated here. I, I don't know that. And wonder if, if that entire space needs to be restricted to horses only, horses and humans.
If I may, I can, can you see my?
Yeah, I can.
On the screen? So, um, here is Kelly Avenue and the horses come up the coastal trail and they cross over onto the horse trail here.
Right.
And then the slot, I believe, is, um, right here. This is where the horses are, oh no, I'm sorry, it's, it's right here, this is where the horses enter the beach. The volleyball courts, which are seasonal, so they're up, um, you know, we're hoping, we're working on a CDP for future use, but ah, we're looking at probably, um, April, or, you know, early spring until mid-fall. Seasonably, seasonally are located right about here.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
If, if I, if I could, um, one of the things, um, I was, um, again, there are many versions and many issues. I think Matthew spoke to the issue of one of the things is trying to define and create a very definitive point. So it's easy to, to understand and deal with. I, I can't say that I was down in, ah, San Luis Obispo County and down in, um, in that area. And on the beach there, they actually allow the dogs only in the early mornings and in the evenings after six o'clock. So they allow the locals to, to basically have access to the beach with their dogs. But, um, but during the days, they said, you know, the dogs keep, keep off the beach. So there are various, um, ways to, to approach this and, um, and I was, um, inter, interested in that, um, we happened to be there, Tara and I, um, with Bentley in the car because they didn't allow a dog. But, ah, but, ah, watching that and we happened to be there in the transition, um, to where folks started coming after five o'clock with their dogs after work um, and coming and so again, there are many ways to, to approach this issue. That's one concept that was, um, that we, that I have seen in a fairly local, um, basis in, in San Luis Obispo area.
John, was that Avala Beach?
Avala Beach.
Yeah. So we can, we can certainly reach out to them and, and get some understanding of how effective that's been having, um, time-limited um, hours for, for dogs on the beach. I know it's very popular. My daughter goes to school down there and, and actually goes during that time because she wants some doggy time because she doesn't get it while she's at school. So, um, we can certainly check in with them on how effective that's been.
I'm gonna, ah, circle through the other council numbers before coming back to you, Joaquin, if that's okay? So.
That's okay.
Okay, Harvey?
To be honest, I'm very confused. We start off to hear about Joaquin's, ah, interactions with dogs and, ah, his horses and, and other people have had very negative, ah, problems on beach, okay? But we have an existing, ah, ordinance about basically no unleashed dogs allowed. And in that situation, we still have, you know, this horrible, ah, interactions. So I'm confused as to how the thought that having a, ah, a magic line that would now say that, ah, off-leash dogs would be allowed, ah, this south of the line, but not north, would actually make a real difference. I mean, I, I, it would be wonderful if it is, but I, I'm just confused to think that those people who are, ah, violating the law now, including our, ah, planning director, that if we had this, ah, you know, ah, sign up would actually make a difference. I, I just don't know what to do. I, I certainly think that dogs do need to run, there needs to be a place for that. I just don't know how, ah, north of this line, um, we could actually enforce what seems to be the will of the, ah, council to ah, minimize interactions between the horses and the dogs. So I, I just don't know what to do, but that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Harvey, or Robert?
Yeah, I think it's great to have a pile. In terms of what Harvey was asking, you know, I think if we, um, have pretty clear signs on the beach and a line saying no unleashed dogs permitted beyond this point coming from that direction. You know, the first thing we gotta do is figure out what are, what are the measures that we would consider it's a successful pilot or unsuccessful? And how are we gonna monitor that? Because you mentioned earlier some of the, um, struggles Matthew with, you know, having enforcement down there. And there's probably a few ways you can look at that too, but the idea of putting it in a smaller space that can be, um, you know, visible from the bluffs where it's more obvious. And then I think, um, you know, and it becomes clear that we're not gonna, you know, if the pilot doesn't work, then we're not gonna have this space for unleashed dogs. That people will help enforce that, you know, and so in other words, don't ruin it for everybody. By disobeying, you know, there'll be social reinforcement of that. I think definitely avoid looking the leash with the unleashed dog, that sounds like a recipe for disaster. And, um, and yeah, we limit it to a space that we feel can be observed. And, um, figure out a way that people can also report. You know, something on their phone, have a QR code that they could quickly report, ah, folks who seem to be violating that. And that we, um, and we do a pilot, I think the recommendation needs to have that word pilot in there, by the way. I just didn't see that, so make it really clear that this is a pilot, ah, to see if it's gonna work. And, um, and maybe, yeah, maybe having certain hours might work also. But, um, you know, the situation as it stands now, where people are being abusive when they're asked to leash their dogs is really untenable. And as our prior speaker mentioned, it's not the horses, for example, that are being the aggressors. You know, usually it's gonna, you know, it's only gonna be the dogs who get overly excited. And their owners aren't being responsible, so, um, and I don't know how much, you know, you might be able to do some enforcement, spot enforcement, just the way once in a while you have speed traps and sheriffs are sitting there writing tickets. You might want to give some more, make sure we have some enforcement powers for the sheriff in terms of a hefty fine if a dog is, um, found to unleash. So I think there's a number of things you might be able to do. But we should just really be clear ahead of time on how we are going to enforce it. And then again, what are the measures for determining if it's, ah, relatively successful or not?
Thank you, Robert, ah, Joaquin.
Yes, I have actually answers for, ah, for, ah, Vice Mayor Penrose. So option one, ah, if you look at the map, ah, actually it's not a large area from the, ah, from the slot to go down to the beach with the horses north. That's a state beach, so no horses or dogs are allowed. So the only area would be from Poplar, you know, to where the arrow is pointing now. Would be no, no dogs allowed. So, and that actually will be easier to, ah, to observe, you know, ah, going back to, ah, Harvey's, you know, question about how we're gonna be able to, ah, to control the, you know, about no, about the dogs. If you're on the bluffs, ah, even from the, from Poplar, from the parking lot, you can see. You know, you can see all the way, you know, you know, to the slot where you go down to the, to the beach. If there's a dogs, ah, off-leash, I mean, there's any dogs at all. So I actually, you know, I like option one, if we need to implement something, ah, it will make it easier, ah, to enforce. And it'd be safer for the, you know, for the horses and for the people and for the dogs. If you keep the dogs on leash, you know, like I mentioned, you know, when I was attacking, when my horse was attacked, the dog was on a leash, but the owner could not handle the dog and the dog got away from the owner and attacked, you know, you know, my horse and, and me. So that's, ah, you know, option one. And, ah, and how we, ah, I mean, being a pilot program, how can we, you know, have resorts that actually to implement a program like this? I mean, thinking about citations, if we have, ah, dogs on areas where not dogs are allowed, if they appear to are on site, if they see dogs running in the area on a leash where not, where they're not permitted, you know, maybe a citation or two, my, you know, though people reconsider about going in certain areas, ah, with the dogs. And signage, and that's the other thing, you know, educating, or, you know, ah, or beachgoers or public, ah, community members, you know, that, ah, dogs are not allowed in a specific area of the beach. If you go from Poplar south, that's a long, that's a lot of beach to, to actually to bring your dogs. Because you can go all the way to, ah, from Poplar all the way to the Ritz. You know, so that is a long area for dogs to be on, on, on a, on a leash or off-leash. If you, you know, educate the public, you know, you go to Redondo Beach, ah, you have access to the beach and you can, you know, keep your dogs, ah, on, ah, off-leash if you would like. You know, horses will not be, ah, I mean, horses will usually go to Poplar. You know, for horse riders, in this case myself, it will be, keep in mind that if I ride south all the way to the Ritz or to Redondo Beach, there's gonna be dogs in the area and some dogs gonna be on a leash and some dogs will be off-leash. So it does something for me to consider if I wanna ride on the beach, you know, all the way south to, ah, to the Ritz. And also, like I said, I'll be educating, ah, the horse riders as well. Especially when people come from over the hill, ah, from the Central Valley to ride their horses at the beach.
Vice Mayor, then I'm going to ask that we give direction after I comment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about the folks who live in the north part of Half Moon Bay as opposed to down near Poplar. And those folks that are dog owners that may want to walk their dogs down Kelly to the beach. And I think that, um, it might be fair to think in terms of times of day when that's allowed. I, I do like the idea of evening or early morning, um, dog walks by homeowners. That, that doesn't mean people with six dogs that they're dog tending, but individual dogs on, on leash, um, during certain, certain times of day, that's all. I think that's a great idea and I think we ought to look at that.
So I really appreciated Willa's comments this evening. And, ah, I, I don't see the point of a pilot where the horses are. I think the horses need to be protected. I think we need a permanent project to keep dogs away from the area where the horses are. So I'd be in favor, you know, of some barrier, not in a pilot project, but just, you know, prohibit unleashed dogs north of that match line, just period. I, I don't see the point of a, a pilot there. The horses, and the horse and dog interaction needs to be modified, period, sort of. So for me, the pilot would be south, you know, Poplar Beach. And, um, I totally agree with Robert that, you know, the pilot needs monitoring and enforcement and, and metrics. So not just anecdotal experience, like we think it worked, you know, people seem happy or whatever it is, but you know, that we monitor it carefully. And, ah, I'm guessing people, if they come to Poplar Beach and, ah, have a city permit, that they have to pay to park to walk their dog, right? I don't think they need that at Redondo Beach, at least not yet. I'm guessing that might change when we do the, ah, the Coastside Land project there with the trail extension, but, ah, they pilot South, learn, just go forward with being dogs off-leash. Maybe just dogs in general, nor something. I, I, I've seen it, you know, I've lived here thirty years, I've seen lots of off-leash dogs causing lots of problems for horses and people and everything else, so. So, yeah, check the, the hour, the hours regulatory approach and talk to those, ah, cities and see how that works, but, um, you know, if we're gonna do pilots, do it south and let's be organized about it, is all I would say.
So you're, you're advocating that no dogs, that's option one, be allowed north of Poplar.
Well, as a consideration, certainly no off-leash dogs. I think that needs to be actually enforced. Leash dogs north of the match line. I think we have to protect the area from, you know, negative horse-dog, ah, interactions to the extent we can. I just think, you know, Willa's, um, points were, you know, very compelling. And I've seen the problems, so.
But Joaquin has, ah, had bad interactions with a dog that was connected to a leash. So to be consistent, I, I'm not advocating, I just want to make clear that, ah, what I understand is that you are advocating that, ah, no dogs be allowed leashed or unleashed north of Poplar.
Well, you could, you know, do the timing thing there. You know, I don't know what time the horses start, I'm guessing it's more like nine or ten in the morning. I might be wrong about that, you know, allow dogs there, you know, early morning, you know, late afternoon or evening. Try to keep the dogs away from the horses, I think. Again, you know, something, you know, we pointed out that there's plenty of beach south of Poplar for, you know, for dogs to, to run and roam. But I do think we want, you know, to the extent we can, manage horse and dog interactions. This is just a workshop, you know, I mean, we're not, we don't have to make a final decision tonight, we're, we're giving input to staff, so. This is just a workshop, you know, I mean, we're not, we don't have to make a final decision tonight, we're, we're giving input to staff, so.
I just had one comment um, regarding the example that Joaquin gave about a leashed dog where the owner was not able to control the dog. So that's kind of one of the metrics. Is that, you know what I mean? Is that an exception? Cause I don't like making policies and rules by exceptions, or is that something that happens often where people, you know what I mean, where dogs, even though they're uh, leashed, their owners can't control them. And that's something to, you know, again, it's one of those metrics. It was a good example of just how, you know, what dangerous a situation can evolve. You can't assume just because a dog is leashed. But my guess is that's not the usual cases that we're talking about. It's more the unleashed dogs. Where sometimes you can't even find the owner, so um, so anyway, yeah, I'm just saying, it's one of those things you need to look at, but.
I mean, you can start by saying, you know, only leashed dogs. We're going to enforce, you know, our leash laws in this area strictly. To mitigate the horse-dog interactions.
I, I can say, based on, again, working on this issue and working with the, the horse operators and, and, and the beaches under the recreation programs for the last five and a half years. Um, anecdotally, the worst interactions we've had, including some, some pretty dangerous situations, were dogs on leash that were either out of control or had broken free. They were on a leash but not connected to an owner. Um, and, and so I, I, I think that's um, we can certainly work on how do we collect that data? We have lots of anecdotal data. Um, how do we document that, those interactions better to understand? If, if a pilot or a program like this is actually working. And uh, you know, and again, I can, in response to some of the questions and some really good conversations I've had with different sheriff's captains over the years, but a, a nice long conversation this week with our current sheriff's captain. The clearer the rules are and the, the simpler the rules are, the easier it's going to be to provide some level of enforcement and education to the community, because I do agree. We're, what we're trying to do here is not punish people. We're trying to create a situation where the different types of users of the beach can use it the way that they want to, but do it in a safe way. And, and again, I, I think most of us on this call have dogs. I have two laying at my feet right now during this meeting. I love taking my dogs to the beach and they love going to Poplar Beach. But having small children, I also know that families often are looking for places to not be around dogs. If you have small children, you don't want your small children around off-leash dogs often. And so I do think if we were to go forward with something where this stretch north of, of the Poplar vertical access was a dog-free zone, we're serving more than just horse users. We're actually serving individuals and families that don't wanna interact with, with the, with the dogs on or off leash. Um, which, which is another segment of our community. So I think, again, what we're trying to do is create a solution here that meets everybody's needs, is easy to enforce, easy to educate, easy to, easy to understand and track the success.
Okay, so then maybe a no-dog pilot north of the match line and an off-leash dog pilot south.
That's option one.
Yeah. So that would be, you know, no dogs, not leash dogs, north of the match line, no dogs.
And I think, I think the direction we would, we would ask for, and John, please uh, jump in if you, if, if you like. Um, it is not direction to pursue this yet, but to start doing the outreach to understand the community's needs better. Um, I, I do think there is a lot of people that are gonna be very interested in this. And we wanna make sure that we're getting enough feedback, that we, we feel like there's support and that we are meeting the community's needs. I do think, um, I appreciated uh, John's point uh, on Avala Beach and understanding if maybe a simpler option is, you know, dogs are allowed certain times of day, um, on or off leash. So I'd like to be able to explore all those options, do some community outreach and then bring an actual recommendation forward to you um, in, in the coming months. Uh, I think this particular item gets uh, becomes much more important as we get into the summer months. And so I do think we have some time right now to, to figure this out and develop the best recommendation for you to consider uh, before our next beach season comes along. John, please uh, please.
I, I only wanna reinforce what, what you've just said, which is that obviously um, I, I'll, I'll, I'll use the feral cats as a, as a, as a bad example or a good example, but um, all of a sudden, a lot of folks got interested in the feral cat issue from that workshop and conversation, a lot of misunderstandings out there and I'm, I'm spending some time to, to um, to make sure those misunderstandings are clear and, and understood where, where I think we are. I can see the same situation arising out of this and assumptions made based on any decision in any direction you give tonight, that it's a fait accompli. And I think we wanna be clear that it's, I think you as a counselor are saying it's not. But we can, if you so choose as a consensus to say, let's look at option one with the, with the concept of looking at the hours as well as a, as a, as a concept and look at what else is out there in terms of best practices that we may not have done. Put that to the community, start a conversation, don't make it, don't surprise them um, in the spring with uh, with new rules and new rulemaking on this deal. Let's, let's keep them involved and engaged. And um, and I think um, our, the key to this is that the, that our message is clear. Matthew said it, I think, um, very well. We're trying to provide an opportunity for everybody to enjoy and have the best possible experience they can at Poplar Beach and the safest possible experience. And sometimes that means some segregation of uses out there and, and dealing with that, that, that may be where we come. Or, and that means also by hours and/or by location, so. Um, and, you know, it's not a fait accompli, but, but if that's your direction tonight, then that gives us a great place to start and to start working on a, a community process to, to talk about it.
That works for me.
Okay.
Any other dog love, wanna comment before we move on? Okay. Um, any commission and committee updates?
Madam Mayor, we have Recreation Commission update. Um, I think John Doughty's gonna do that. And then we will have a brief update on the Planning Commission from your Community Development Director, Jill Eukes.
And I'll be very short. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, happy, we, last week was Parks and Rec Commission meeting. And um, one, I think, important note for the community and for you is that we consolidate, because of the holidays, we consolidate the November and December meetings into a special meeting, which will be on Wednesday, December seventh. Uh, so if you're looking for that in the community or whatever, look for it December seventh. Um, and that will be, um, again, a special meeting and consolidation of those two months. Uh, we are also announced, um, the pop-up and I'll, I'll take another chance to talk about it is uh, this coming Saturday. Um, there'll be the pop-up event at Frenchman's Creek Park, uh, talking about Phase Two. And we have the consultants, we have staff will be there and should be fun, ten to twelve. And uh, so you can still go and deal with your uh, recycled uh, materials and deal with that and still come back for the pop-up, so um, it, it'll be an exciting for uh, Saturday morning for those out, out, out who wanna participate. And um, we also presented um, a uh, package on changes that we've made to the surf school uh, process and really um, those, that changes is really um, formalizing it, having an application form and asking folks to submit and, and prepare for that. And so that's gonna, that's out on the, on the, on the webpage, on our homepage, um, letting folks know. We've also sent notices to those that have participated in the past. And we will look at consolidating also um, surf school with surf camps for the summer camps. And uh, we are looking to bring those back probably under consent calendar for December twentieth, which we know is your reorg night. But we're hoping to bring those forward so they can begin as early as uh, first of January for um, the program. As noted tonight, I think we just say that the sand volleyball courts have been removed. Um, this time of year, we start getting pretty heavy surf and so those have been removed and that's something we've been noted. And I also wanted to give a big shout out to uh, Chair Stamper. Uh, she, she toughed it out. She was under the weather, not feeling well. And uh, she still chaired the meeting and came, so uh, shout out to her and the other members for, for being there, but particularly for Hillary for, for toughing it out. So that's all I have to, to mention to um, about last week's meeting. Thanks.
Great, thank you, John.
Hi, Giddy King. Yeah, just not much. Um, uh, our next meeting is actually canceled because it is Election Day. This doesn't usually happen to the Planning Commission. It's typically a, a council meeting uh, when Election Day falls on that, that Tuesday, so. Uh, we are canceling that and we will be meeting because, because we have to cancel that. We are meeting Thanksgiving week. Uh, so the commission's next meeting is November twenty-second. And on that agenda, we will be reviewing uh, some process um, items about coastal development permit modifications. So that is coming up then and um, just trying to think of any other highlights for you on stuff to spend, cranking through permits. You, you saw Scott present earlier about that Pullman Culver, so that was, that was last week and we were happy to do that. And uh, we'll, we'll update you with the next meeting. We are, um, by the way, gonna come back and see you with Measure D and uh, building code before the end of the year, so um, lots, lots going on here.
Shout out to Okoey for her first.
I know, she, she did great. Um, Okoey Wilson is, um, we've encouraged you to meet her. I think most of you have. She's our new assistant planner. And she has now debuted with the Architectural Advisory Committee as well as the Planning Commission and it was, um, she was, she did great. Oh, one, one more thing on the Planning Commission. Uh, some of the commissioners have been really working hard on getting training. Uh, we have uh, two commissioners who uh, recently took a kind of a soup to nuts training course. Uh, it was in Cupertino and then another commissioner who has um, really taken it upon herself to get out there and get some more CQA backgrounds, so that was great. And we're hoping that commissioners can uh, save the date for the uh, League's uh, Planning Commissioners Academy. It's not until the spring, but it always sells out. Uh, and then the Twenty-One Elements Group for San Mateo County is preparing some uh, really locally focused training that we hope will uh, kick in in January. It's very affordable and um, highly relevant to, to our area.
Thank you for that, Jill. Any city council reports?
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
I attended the uh, CCA G CMEQ, which is City Count, City County Association of Governments Congestion Management and Environmental Quality Meeting where they um, talked about a shared microability feasibility study and implement, implementation plan. Um, this is using e-bikes, um, managed by CCAG. Uh, it's a two-year pilot program and it's gonna be located in uh, Daly City Broadmoor, Colma area and Redwood City in North Fair Oaks. I also attended the SAM Operations Committee. Um, and we will begin a program that's sponsored by an East Coast firm uh, similar to our COVID testing, where we'll be testing our influent at the SAM plant for high-risk substances. Uh, it's a three-month program with a weekly report on the amounts of fentanyl, methamphetamines, cocaine and nicotine. So this should be kind of interesting to see. It uh, it offers us uh, an opportunity to see really what is going on here in the coast. And that's it.
I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy uh, Board Meeting where uh, we have agreed to uh, pay for uh, power that is pretty much twenty-four by seven. Uh, and that is in uh, in accord with the, the plan that uh, our uh, power be a hundred percent renewable, twenty-four by seven. Uh, that means when the sun doesn't shine and the wind isn't blowing, we still full energy. Uh, the two contracts that we approved had to do with geothermal power, which is fairly expensive but is uh, reliable, a hundred twenty-four hours a day, as well as uh, small hydrothermal uh, uh, streams flowing. So um, Peninsula Clean Energy is very committed to this idea, which is pretty revolutionary, that not only is the power averaged over a year, a hundred percent renewable, it'll be on a, uh, hour by hour basis. So that's, that's pretty interesting. And we're trying to become a model for the rest of California and ultimately the country. So that was a very interesting meeting.
Thank you, Harvey. I, I heard the same presentation Deborah heard on micro mobility at the County Bikeways Committee. And at, at One Shoreline, we got a presentation on a plan to address flooding in San Bruno about a year ago during one of the atmospheric rivers. You may recall reading about um, a car that got stuck in floodwaters near the three-eighty bridge and people actually drowned. Um, and, and so there's this, it, it's very, the, the stormwater situation there is very, very complicated. Um, and involves probably five or six different agencies. But there's finally a plan to deal with that, you know, it's Caltrans, um, it's the City of San Bruno, it's the county, it's, the airport has some responsibility for it. So it's amazing um, what infrastructure can do to, you know, really screw up natural processes. Uh, and One Shoreline is trying to deal with that through, you know, various stormwater projects and uh, it, it was just interesting to see, you know, the multiple pieces that are needed and all the money that's needed to fix a problem in, in just one area. So I found that very interesting. I don't have anything else. Anybody else?
Yes, uh, so last week I attended two uh, two events in Half Moon Bay. Uh, one was the, the vigil uh, about housing, you know, community, the need of uh, low-income housing or community affordable housing. And I continued to uh, to listen to new stories about people being evicted. Uh, you know, community that includes, you know, senior farmworkers, uh, farmworkers, essential workers. They continue to receiving, you know, eviction notices, uh, thirty days, you know, notice uh, to move. Uh, and it's uh, it's sad. Uh, if you get an opportunity, you know, I know these vigils happen the fourth Friday of the month. You know, if you could join the vigils and just listen to the community, what they're sharing about what's going on right now, about the high rents, uh, the cost of rents going up, uh, people receiving eviction notices. Uh, families looking for at least a room to rent, you know, uh, and it is very difficult. The other event, you know, it was uh, Dia de los Muertos celebration, you know, Day of the Dead celebration. If you were downtown, uh, Half Moon Bay on Saturday, uh, you could hear the, you know, the laughter, the joy, the, the music. If you were there downtown, you could see the colorful uh, activity, you know, the participation of the children, you know, performing uh, there was a special uh, parade that happened at six o'clock. It was called the, the Katrina's, you know, Walk. Uh, the meaning, you know, the ladies walk, uh, and that's, you know, the Dia de los Muertos. And that's, you know, the Dia de los Muertos, traditional walk down Main Street into the Maravilla Plaza. And people commented about we need more of these events, more cultural events in our community. It just brings a lot of joy, you know, especially right now with the struggles that are happening in our community. And that's, you know, if you get an opportunity to be present in some of these celebrations or some of these events like the vigils, you get an opportunity to hear from our community.
That was an amazing altar too at the Maravilla Plaza.
Oh, yes, so you know, the last two years, Half Moon Bay had the best altars in the peninsula compared to the ones in Redwood City, compared to the ones in San Francisco. In other parts of the peninsula where they do the altars or friendas. You know, Half Moon Bay is becoming very known, you know, well-known for the altars, you know, downtown Aurora City.
Really amazing. It was totally amazing, yeah. Any future agenda items? I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Could I make one quick comment before we end? I'd be remiss if I didn't just share. I just want to recognize some of our staff. The last week, there's been two alcohol and democracy-related events. Last Thursday night at the library, we had our elections night out, which was something we started before the pandemic and had to put on hold during the pandemic. And we just didn't know how it would be received this year. But we held it at the Half Moon Bay Library. There was food, there was an opportunity to drop off your ballot, to register to vote and to interact with city staff and some of our community partners. And we had over 100 people attend from the community, as well as many staff and many community partners. It was a really great event. It was not a political event. It was a very, anybody could be there, anybody could enjoy it. We had lots of ballots cast and some people actually registered to vote who hadn't registered before. So just want to take my hat off to Jessica Blair, our City Clerk and Communications Director, Colleen Latier, our Communications Program Manager, and many other city staff that made that happen. It was great for the community and great to gather on such an important issue, especially right now. And then they went right from that into the Saturday event with outgoing Congresswoman Jackie Speer had a wonderful event at the Boys and Girls Club, followed by a very nice reception. The staff ran themselves ragged the last week. Behind the scenes, it was chaotic, but I think the community just saw great things happening. And again, a focus on democracy, which is exactly what we should be thinking about right now. So thanks to them, thanks to all of our staff for being there and supporting. And thanks for the community for taking advantage of these great events, so.
Our staff is amazing. These events are amazing. Awesome. Yay. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. And I also just want to give huge kudos to Colleen Latier and Maggie Rodriguez, who pulled the weight of much of these events.
Stunning. On that positive note, we'll adjourn the meeting. Have a good evening, everybody.